So Vicki, go for it. Please read the hearing notice.
Yep. Oh, that's the wrong one. Sorry, I'm not quite set up. Yet. Let me.
It's fine.
Here we go. Uh, this is for the Ryan permit, correct?
Right.
It's called getting to order, though.
All right. So you want to start with the call? Call the meeting to order, you said?
Yeah.
All right.
Well. If you insist, I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay. Okay, in.
We usually use the legal notice to open the hearing.
Yeah, we know. That's what we usually do, yeah.
Okay. All right, so the legal notice is in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A and Townsend Zoning Bylaw. The Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access virtual public hearing on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024 at 6:35 PM on the application of Timothy Herbert and Lisa Herbert for a special permit under zoning by law section 145-36 and 145-65. The applicant is proposing to construct an accessory apartment connected to a single-family residence under approval for accessory apartment use at 3 Ryan Road, located in the RB3 zoning district. You can join the meeting by the following Zoom link.
Okay. Let's see. We could go through the mandatory referrals. I heard that. I heard that evil word mentioned. See, what do I have here? So just taking them in order in our folder. The Conscom says basically no comment. Planning Board. I enjoyed this one. On Monday, September 9th, 2024, the planning board members discussed and asked the chair to submit a comment in support of the approval of the accessory dwelling unit, which in January will be by right. We appreciate the wisdom or the decision of the zoning board members. I'm sorry, I got a kick out of that. Board of Health. Basically, the the applicant must complete the following one, obtain a permit from the Townsend Board of Health and install a new D-Box and new multi-compartment septic tank or a new tank to follow the existing tank. I'll add the word tank. And to record a four-bedroom restriction on the deed for the property. The Board of Health has language to be used. This is the first time I've heard of that.
Yeah, why would they do that? I question that.
Yeah, that's.
I would want to know. It's not out of purview, but I'd like to understand that.
Yeah.
Anytime people do deed restrictions, I like to question.
Right. Yeah, I don't.
Mama's on the phone.
Say again? And then the BOS, I believe, was a no comment as well. Leave it at the discretion of the ZBA. Okay.
Beth, is there? Is the accessory apartment section of the bylaw in this file? In one of these folders?
No, but I can put it in right now if you want.
Yeah, because we're going to need to review all those sections.
Let me get that for you. I'll have to drop it in. How am I going to do this?
Right, Bill?
Yeah. I mean, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
I think it's it's on the
Usually I do.
Is it on the application?
No, it's on this 3 Ryan Townsend ZBA accessory apart four hours ago. Do you see that in the directory, the third item down in mine? It's got a checklist.
Under, so the first file is preliminaries, public hearings, business. Is it under public hearings?
I believe that's it, yeah.
And then there's just the special permit, open that folder, and then there's six things.
Right, so the third one down says only, it was modified only four hours ago.
All right, let me see.
So it's got the zoning board letterhead, and it says accessory apartment square footage compliance.
Okay, yeah, that is a
That's only part of it, though.
Yeah.
That's just the work sheet.
All right.
No, but here, here's and then conditions applicable to all accessory apartments are there, so you know, even if we don't have the bylaw in front of us, we can cover the bases.
I'm trying to think of the best way to find this for you. Because I mean, it's in the code.
If you look in the legal notice, that'll tell you the sections.
Yeah, I can go to the code and pull it for you, la 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 la.
I'm just used to you putting it in there.
Yeah, yeah.
145-36 would be the accessory and 145-65 is the special permit criteria.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm going to find that. And I can just email it to you or something, all right?
All right, so while we're getting our act together, why don't we hear from the applicant? I noticed he's on the
Perfect.
on the horn here. With you know, comments on his proposal.
All right.
Hello, can you see me?
Yep.
Hi, Tim.
How you doing? So what we're trying to do is add an accessory apartment onto the existing residence for my mother, just because of everything going on with the cost of living and housing. It would be better for both of us down the road.
Perfect.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so I was looking at the plan, or the application listed the frontage as, you know, less than 200 feet, and I said, wait a minute. Where is this? And then I really realized that it's in one of our OSPDs, so that's why it has a lower frontage requirement. But anyway. Yeah. It doesn't look like you have very much room, looking at the looking at the plans. What did I do with that anyway? Oh, yeah, here it is. I don't understand what's going on with this. Oh, there it goes. So the plan is to put it on the back of the existing house between the house and the pool.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then the application indicated something about the garage, and I'm having trouble figuring that one out.
The addition's on the backside of the existing garage, and the new addition will have a single bay garage as well.
Oh, I see. All right, so you're going to have actually three garage bays. I see it there, yeah. Okay. Cool. All right, opening up to questions from the board?
I'm dropping the I dropped the code for accessory apartments into the public hearing folder. And special apartments should be there in a minute.
Will it be a separate folder, Beth? Or?
No, what you should probably do is maybe just I just refreshed mine here. So when you click on that link, you can hit refresh, and you should see
I got it.
Oh, good. 145-65.
Yeah, 145-65. We need 145-36, though.
Yeah, so right below it, I think.
Okay. The next one.
Yeah, accessory.
Accessory apartments, okay. Cool.
All right.
Okay. Bill, do you see it?
Well, I see. I've got an email.
Yeah.
It's in the folder. Are you looking at the folder, the packet, the OneDrive packet?
I put it in the folder. If you refresh, yeah, refresh the folder and you'll see it there.
Okay.
Yeah, under public hearings.
I can't figure this out because I lost the silly folder, and now I'm looking for there it is. Login information. You gave us a new link for that today, right?
It's the same link, but I did refresh it and add some documents that
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
The ZBA packet, yep. And under public hearings.
I got it, I think.
Good, good.
Public hearings. 145-65, I see that now.
And then there's one.
Right below is one, right below is the 145-36. It says accessory apartment.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay.
I don't seem to be able to find.
Now, this is the one we changed, but the Attorney General didn't approve or something?
Correct. Not, it hasn't been denied, but it's out for an extension, a 90-day extension. So it's still, yeah. Still the one that's in the code.
Yeah, okay. All right, so
So the floor area of the apartment shall be the lesser of either 800 square feet or 35% of the floor area of the principal residence.
Yeah, that exhibit is very good on that. It shows what the floor area is. So that complies.
Yeah.
So we have a written report from the Board of Health, at least we have something from Rick Metcalf about the possibility of putting in a 2,500-gallon tank. Or adding a 1,000-gallon tank to the existing system. So I would assume that's what you're going to do, right, Tim?
Yeah, that's the plan. I already had someone come out and make sure that it just worked with the just using the additional 1,000-gallon tank. And everything worked out just fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to mention for the record, though, under A, number one was the floor area, number two was that who's going to occupy either the principal residence or the apartment, and it is a family member. So that completes A.
Yeah.
All right. C is adequate provisions are made for ingress and egress.
Did I miss a I don't think I saw a plan for the accessory apartment. Did I miss it?
I can pull the plans up if you want.
Okay.
I can pull them up. David, can I have screen sharing capability?
I know. We're going to have to go back and forth between the bylaw and the
The plans are on the Ryan application combined. Okay, so it starts with the application, and then it goes into the plans.
And I didn't see the apartment. What was I missing?
No, but we're reviewing the bylaw, and we have to keep going back and forth with screens. If she shows the plan while we go through this, we won't have to go back and forth on the list of files.
Beth, you've got screen sharing, so go ahead.
Okay. What would you like to see, the plans or the bylaw?
Whatever you guys want.
You want to see the plans or the bylaw? Either one.
Does everybody have the bylaw on this screen?
No.
Okay, I can put that up if you want.
Okay, so I'll go find the plans then on this list.
So is the plan the handwritten?
No. It says Ryan, Ryan accessory combined.
Right, and for the apartment, the last thing in there. It's handwritten, looks like it's copy. Okay, I see. I'm understanding it, but I'm having a hard time orienting myself. The old and the new.
Now I gotta go find the plan and that list of stuff, so. Oh, here we go. When she did that, it took up my whole screen, so I lost it. There we go. All right, so is anybody located where the ingress and egresses are on the plan yet? Do we comply?
No, actually.
I see two at the says A above it, I guess. It's supposed to be egress.
Oh, I see.
And then the bedroom. The primary bedroom.
I see a I see a back door. I see a couple of doors from the garage.
Tim, maybe you can help us out where to find them. Your plan's beautiful and has a lot on there.
So in the the bedroom that's on the new plan, there are three egress windows, all three of those being egress in the bedroom. And then if you go over to the living room, there is 36-inch door that's also egress.
Okay, but we have a garage that's an egress as well, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. I would say the garage would count as an egress and the living room door.
Okay.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I think that'll work.
All right. Beth, can you make the bylaw bigger?
Yeah.
Please? A little bigger?
Can you make it better?
All right. Egress, what's next after egress?
Not be detrimental to the neighborhood in which the lot is located.
Oh, I think it's going to be beautiful. Do we have any neighbors saying that's going to be terrible here? No. There aren't any butters or anyone present, are there? I don't see anything. All right, anybody have a problem with detrimental?
No.
No.
All right, E. It's at least three quarters of an acre, yes.
I believe it's over, they have over an acre.
Yeah. Adequate provisions have been made for off-street parking of motor vehicles. There's another garage. I think it's got a big driveway, I noticed on the plan. I think you're good.
It's got a, it's got a three-car garage, so I think he's got adequate parking.
He's adequate, yep. There's no other apartment on the lot on which the accessory apartment is to be located. Is that true?
That is true.
Awesome.
I don't know where you put it.
Any accessory intended. It's not intended for occupancy by a person with a disability, is it?
Nope.
All right. That covers all the criteria, doesn't it?
I think so, yeah.
So you got all those findings of fact, Beth?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Did we talk about, so is the impact on ground and water quality and stuff through
That's on the special permit criteria.
Okay.
145-65.
Okay.
So are we ready to move over to that now, next, Bill?
Yeah, sounds good.
There you go.
Awesome.
Okay, so in order to grant a special permit, we have to make a determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
Can we make that motion go through A through G?
Well, let's go. So you want a motion for that, or you want to go through them first?
No, let's do A through G first.
Yeah, right, okay. So A, adequacy of the site in terms of size. That seems to be adequate. What is the area of the lot? Is it 1.6 acres or something?
No, 1.4.
It's over an acre, only need three quarters.
Right. Yeah, so it seems adequate to me. Suitability of the site, it's residential site, it's a residential use. Impact on traffic flow and safety is negligible. Impact on neighborhood visual characters, including views and vistas. I can't remember if there's any vistas from Ryan Road. But I don't see any impact here, other than, you know. As far enough.
Yeah, all the accessory apartment criteria is kind of duplicate to this.
Yeah, and the addition is behind the house, so.
Right. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal, sounds like the Board of Health has covered that ground. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. I think this has underground electric, doesn't it, this subdivision?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. That's a class act, so I would say that's certainly adequate. Impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations. This is a relatively flat lot, is it not?
Yep, pretty flat.
So I don't see how runoff from the roof or anything is going to be creating you know, any environmental degradation due to water runoff.
No.
Any other comments?
No, it looks good. So
Don't everybody speak at once.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Go for it.
All right, hang on, let me find my cheat words here. I I move that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
Second.
Do you want to say anything about, you know, supported by the findings of fact, or is that going to be a separate motion?
I think that would probably be the motion to grant.
Okay.
Because I said in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
All right, is there a second? Somebody seconded, right?
Yeah.
Okay, polling the members. Let's see, Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Who else is here? John?
Yes.
I saw John.
Yes.
And although, yes, Bill Cattigan votes yes as well, so the motion carries. Darlene, you want to make another motion?
Yeah, let me see. I move to grant a special permit for an accessory apartment to the Heberts of 3 Ryan Road. Per all the findings of fact for sections 145-36 and 145-65. And with the condition that it be built according to plan. Did I forget anything?
Do we need to put anything in about the septic?
That's already in the findings of fact and in the conditions.
Okay, and it sounds like we as a group are not going to fault, you know, was it the planning board or the Board of Health that wanted a deed restriction? I think we were
I don't think that's our I don't think that's our decision. That's their requirement, not us.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're not going to
I wouldn't be comfortable putting that in my motion, no way.
Well, normally that information is kept in the building department's file on every house, you know, what the septic size is, and also in Noshoba has records of every house from a septic point of view, so I don't see that a deed restriction is even Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and discussion part of it, can I just ask a question? Normally, we put on there that it's good till and blah, 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 but this is going to be as a matter of right in January, so is this all a moot point to say anything like that? That's why I didn't put it in my motion. Do all the special permits that have ever been granted become a matter of right to whatever the current new law is?
I don't I don't know I don't know what possible issues would come up that would you know, require the building department to distinguish between a special permitted accessory apartment and an as-of-right accessory apartment.
But should we, because it's not taken effect yet, should have I added that, or is it just boilerplate that these are now just follows the owner?
Well, we had boilerplate in our other accessory apartment decision, so we probably should be consistent, that's all I would think.
Okay, so it's boilerplate, it's not in the motion. Okay. I'm ready to vote.
All right, polling the members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Cattigan. So the motion carries. We have 14 days to file the decision with the town clerk. You'll get a notice, or you get a copy in the mail that'll show the town clerk's stamp, which would be the date of filing. Then there's a 20-day appeal period from that. And after that 20-day appeal period, you can go to the town clerk, and she'll give you a letter saying that no appeals have been filed, if that's the case. And then you need to record this decision at Millsack South Registry of Deeds. And these days, they give you the book and page immediately, so you'll be able to take that letter from the town clerk and evidence of recording to the building department and get your building permit.
Thank you.
Okay, do you all want to sign the decision?
Okay, do you all wanna sign the decision?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'll go in and sign if you guys wanna make me the person.
I can sign it also.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Whatever you want.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
I'll make a motion that Darlene, uh, can sign for the other board members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, polling members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll, yes as well, Bill Catigan. All right, that motion carries, we're all set.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is great. Beth looks like one of those witches of Eastwick in this, uh, background.
Tim, yeah, I'll be in touch with you, Tim, shortly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, what else do we need?
We've got some minutes, I think.
Yeah. There's a couple that were, I found needed to be approved, or maybe they were approved and they need to be re-approved, but it seemed like there were a few that weren't, uh, were in arrears, so.
All right.
The 3:27 minutes. Um.
This is under business, I would assume, huh?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, 3.1.
3:27, wow, that was a while ago.
Yeah, I know.
I did, yeah, I did not have record of those being approved.
So we only need three votes to approve minutes.
All right, I move to approve the March 27th meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, let's see here, back to Zoom. Uh, polling the members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Catigan. All right.
4:10 is the next ones. Those are easy.
That was an easy one.
That's easy, we didn't do anything.
Yeah.
I move to approve the April 10th meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Second, okay, polling members, John?
Yes.
Um, Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Catigan. All right, so we got that, and, uh, what else?
Uh.
4:17?
April 17th. That was the continuation of the hearing.
Oh, was that Gary Shepherd?
Yeah, that's where we granted that permit. All right, I move to approve the April 17th meeting minutes.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, polling members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, Bill Catigan as well. All right, what else?
Correspondence, clerks, and, uh, announcements.
All right, I think. I think, uh.
Correspondence. I don't even see that. Is it there somewhere?
Um, 3.2, 3 on the agenda.
Yeah.
3.2, that's the, that's the Attorney General not approving our modification to the, um, to the, what do you call it, bylaw of the accessory apartment?
Correction, it's a request for extension, so, you know, but at this point, it's going to be by right, so I'm not sure how the AG is gonna handle that amendment. So we'll see what happens, but.
Yeah.
Everything's changing. February 2nd, the, um, ADU bylaw, uh, by the state will be, um, on, it will be lit, if you will. It's implemented February 2nd, 2025. Um, so I don't know what happens to this amendment.
So did, did, did we decide with the town council? Do we wanna delete our special permit version? Or do we wanna just ignore it?
That's actually in process now, and we're trying to get some guidance from town council and what to do. Um, at the last planning board meeting, or one of the planning board meetings, he said that, you know, they are available to help municipalities like Townsend who don't have, you know, have town meetings in the spring, um, you know, adjust and modify. So we are working on that. We're trying to figure out how that's gonna get, and how it's gonna be done, um, before February 2025. So that means, uh, basically something at Fall Town Meeting, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion. Otherwise, it just is going to be the state law. We have to revert to the state law.
There should be, there should be some language in the state law about superseding any, um, prior zoning bylaws, so I don't know.
I think it says, it does say that, you know, if, if you look at, well, with the lawyer, our town council advisory says, yes, the state supersedes when there's a conflict, it's a, the state wins.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, if the applicant, if applicant meets the criteria set forth in the state, they just get a building permit at this point, the way it's set up. Other towns do have a, uh, are revising their accessory apartment bylaws to incorporate the new definitions and to also incorporate a design review. Um, so there is some sort of review over the accessory apartment applications, and those things will be considered.
Okay, um, Beth, there's a couple of things in here, um, that are dot MSG, which my, uh, computer is not able to decode. What, do?
Okay.
227 Mason Road, is that that, uh, dog parlor or whatever?
Yes, um, and the land use coordinator asked me to just update you that, um, they are still not in compliance with the Board of Health conditions that were set forth, um, so she just simply wanted me to notify the board, um, that, 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 you know, that the Board of Health is aware of it, and the Board of Health has made inspections, and the applicant, um, we expect the applicant to comply, and I'll update you on that to make sure that gets done. Uh, there were just a few items, uh, had to do with the additional tank he was required to install, and I think there was another record of, um, yeah, I think it just had to do with the, uh, tanks. Uh, yeah.
Well, I mean, okay, I mean, the Board of Health has, has got more enforcement power than anybody else, so they oughta be able to resolve this.
Exactly. I think it's just FYI, but the land use coordinator wanted you to know. And the other one is regarding updating the floodplain bylaw. Um, because the maps have been, um, have been, are in the process of being upgraded, um, we're going to look through the whole bylaw, and I believe you are the SBGA under that bylaw. Does that sound familiar? Have any of you ever, um, done any work with the floodplain bylaw? Do you remember? No? Okay, okay.
No, no.
All right. So.
You're talking about modify, the, the modification, the recent modifications to the FEMA maps are affecting our floodplain bylaw?
Well, yes, to stay, uh, compliant with the NFIP program, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, um, we need to update the model, uh, update the bylaw and insert, we also have to insert the updated maps once they're released. I think they're gonna be released in, uh, December of 2025. So, um, if you're, uh, interested in helping with the process or understanding it, uh, we had a representative come to the planning board meeting, uh, at the last meeting on the 9th, and she gave a, um, pretty much an update on what Townsend needs to do to stay compliant so that, um, we can continue to offer the residents that, um, floodplain insurance. And that's important, I guess, when you have property that's got a federally backed loan, right?
If you want a mortgage, yes.
Yeah, yeah, federally backed especially, so yeah. So, and right now, there are 17 of those loan, uh, insurance programs out, uh, in total of like, I think it's $52 million in coverage that's being taken, you know, utilized right now under that program, so we wanna keep that compliant. And Spring Town Meeting is gonna be the, the timeline to get that amended and snuffed up, up to snuff. That's that, and that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, and you do have an application, uh, received, uh, regarding 324 Main Street. Um, they, and can't discuss it tonight, obviously, but I will be distributing that to you, um, in, uh, probably in the next day or two, if not tomorrow, then Monday. Uh, the hearing is going to be, uh, let me give you at least that. The public hearing is going to be, I just wanna make sure I give you all the right date, October 23rd, which is the Wednesday. It was gonna be the 16th, but we needed to push it out a week. So it'll be October 23rd, 6:30. All right?
Okay.
More on that soon, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Does that do it?
Yep, thank you.
All right, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
No discussion, Bill.
We have to, we have to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so polling members, John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Thank you all for your kind attention and, uh. Have a good one.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night.